Okay, thank you. Jen, would you lead us with your statement?
Sure. As long as, a lot of meetings start with the Pledge of Allegiance, but we'll skip that and we'll go right to the statement. So this meeting is being convened virtually pursuant to recent amendments to the New York State Open Meetings Law, which allow for boards to convene via video conference without an in-person meeting requirement. There's a quorum of the board present. This meeting will be, there'll be a transcript of this meeting provided, and the video of the meeting will also be available as well. With that, Chairman, take it away.
Okay, very good. Thanks. We'll call a meeting to order, and our first item tonight is a request for an extension of approval. This is the Chappaqua Central School District. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat, steep slope permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval. This is at Button Hook Road and Sabina Road. So we last heard this September 8th, and perhaps Sabrina and Bob, you can provide us with some updates in terms of where we are, where the applicant is.
Bob, go ahead.
Well, sure. Basically, I received approval from the Westchester County not too long ago. I believe it was January 20th. And I think I received a set of drainage plans from the engineer. I don't know if they were approved from DEP yet. I haven't gotten an official word from DEP. Would the attorney know any better on that? Have you received any confirmation from DEP that they approved the plans and drawings and the stormwater?
Hi, good evening, planning board members and town engineer, Mr. Seoli. It's good to see you. For the record, Kristen Motel from Cuddy and Thader for Chappaqua School District. You are correct. We did receive Department of Health approval for the plat. We did make a submission in the end of December to DEP. We have not heard back yet on that, so that's currently what we're waiting for. That submission was provided in response to a conference with the DEP that the school district had, and Jennifer Gray and Bob Seoli were on that, too. And we've been looping them in with updates every chance that we get. So as soon as we hear back from the DEP, whether it be more comments or an approval, you'll all be the first to know.
Thank you. Good. Okay, thank you. Sabrina, anything you need to add at all? Okay, so it appears that the applicant's making some very good progress. Any questions from board members?
I have none.
Okay. Not seeing any questions or further comments. Is there a motion to grant the request that the applicant has submitted for the for this preliminary subdivision plat?
No move.
Thank you, Dick. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
I, yes, okay. Any opposed? No motions carried for five zip. Very good. So good luck with further progress and hope to see you soon.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes, thank you for dropping by.
Yep.
Bye.
Okay, we have minutes. We can go through these, well, I guess through each one of the meetings. But again, unless there's really some, you know, major substantive issues, perhaps it would be best if we submit the changes, if there are any changes to Felicia. I caught a couple of typos, but I don't know if we want to take the time to go through it. So the first ones are the minutes from the meeting of April 20th. So any thoughts, questions, any major issues at all? Things that we really need to pay some special attention to? If not, with the exception of perhaps a couple of typos, et cetera, that we can submit to Felicia. Is there a motion then to accept the minutes as amended?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I, okay. The next ones that we have are the minutes for the meeting of May 4th. Again, are there any substantive issues, major issues, concerns? And if not, again, is there a motion to adopt the minutes as they might be, they will be amended, perhaps with some minor, you know, wordsmithing and typographical errors issued?
I have no comments. Period.
I was looking for a motion.
A move.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know if I should.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. In that case, yeah, you can't really vote on these minutes, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not on this one, yeah.
Elved, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
I, yes, and all that. Okay, so it's four zero. And the final minutes are the meeting of May 18th. Again, any questions, issues? And if not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I, yes, any opposed? No motions carried, and good. Move on to the next item. The next item is our discussion, ongoing discussion with regard to the planning board process. This is a review of the draft laws, rules, excuse me, not laws. We started this last month, and thank you again, Jennifer, for putting together this information, these drafts. I think this tremendously helpful. And here we are. So why don't we go through the first summary sheet? We had asked that we thought that perhaps a bullet schedule should be put together for applicants so that they quickly can look at, you know, single sheet, the Dick Brownell Rule, single sheet. And then, of course, the other document would be, you know, more illustrative and have more information. But this was, I thought, a very good idea to have a single sheet before an applicant to give them a good summary of what the process might be about and what's going to be required. So I don't know if folks have any thoughts on it?
I have one comment.
Sure.
Go ahead, Tom. You have one?
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead, Dick.
All right, on the submission requirements, a small item. Is it 22 calendar or 22 business days?
Calendar.
Okay, I would suggest that be put in.
Yep, good idea.
Das ist alles.
Okay, Tommy, have some thoughts?
Well, I think it's great. Thank you for condensing this down to one page. I hope, I believe it's going to be, it'll be helpful as sort of the wake-up call for applicants. Not that the staff doesn't advise them of everything that they need to know, but I think this concise statement is really good. I just have a question about, this is a minor point, but under bullet three, submission requirements, it says no substitution of materials. I'm not sure that it would be clear what that actually, substitution, I mean, of what materials? I mean, would it be, would it be clear to say substitution of materials? I don't know. I know what it is. I know that, you know, once you submit your materials, you can't make a substitution within the 22 days, right? Done and done. So maybe, maybe that's clear enough. It's certainly, I assume that it's, I believe it's spelled out a little bit more clearly in the in the full text. So that was really my only comment. Otherwise, I think it's great.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Where are you, Felicia? There you are.
Sorry. I noticed that you're asking for the submission requirements, 10 collated copies. We usually say 12.
Okay.
That's for my purposes.
Okay, so we should make that correction, yes. Good. I had some, I just want to throw this out to members. Some of this is just really wordsmithing. In the third bullet, this is the conceptual sketch plan. I might suggest we use the word urged instead of encouraged. And instead of appear before, which always sounds like you're going in for a ticket, you know, you're appearing before court, you know? Maybe we just say urge to consider meeting with the planning board. If we say meeting with, it just sounds a little bit less daunting, perhaps. Those are one thought. And then the other thought I had is more substantive, and that is really on the public hearing issue. I don't know if we really need to, we should be handicapping ourselves or giving any information in terms of the number of appearances informal that we anticipate with the two appearances. I really think that's, you know, I think for the most part, I think instead of saying no more than two appearances as soon as practicable, based on the other language that's in here. If we start doing that, I think we're going to start having people pushing back and saying, well, wait a second, you know, you had your two informals, that's it, you know, you're supposed to be scheduling us for a public. And we might be able to schedule someone for a public on the very first meeting, the second meeting, and we may not have to go through, you know, two informals. So, and of course, there are very, a lot of applications where it takes a lot longer than two for all different kinds of reasons. So that would be my thought, and that, of course, we carry over into the other document as well. I just think that we are unnecessarily burdening ourselves or in some cases even lowering expectations below what they really are. So I would suggest using the words as soon as practicable, subject to the sufficiency of the application material. And of course, we have the 12 collated. I, you know, and the other issue I had was for, before the fourth bullet, again, I really think that this conceptual sketch plan, as much as possible, could be very, very helpful. And I think it's something that we should try to steer people to as much as possible. We've heard that it's going to be impossible to steer everyone because some people are all set, they got their plans, and that's fine. But perhaps even before, I'm not quite sure how this works, but I had written some scratches in some words. If you bypass the conceptual plan meeting, or, yeah, I guess, then, you know, you go down to the next, you know, submission requirements right away. Again, emphasizing that by putting that in as a reminder, that really, it would be very useful for everyone concerned if you really take advantage of that conceptual sketch meeting. Now, obviously, we have a requirement, and I think that's good, that is first, the pre-application meeting, it's required, so you have to do it. But the, I'd love to see more people take advantage of this conceptual sketch meeting wherever possible.
So I'd like to follow up with a, with an observation or question about that. If I was, I can see some people saying, well, wait a minute. That's, you've really essentially added another 22 days to my schedule because now there's a conceptual meeting before I actually come in with my documentation. And it might, you know, I can see people saying, you know, I just want to minimize my appearances and get out of there. So I wonder if it's possible, maybe not possible, to not require for the conceptual site plan, right? Submission, where you really need 22 days. I mean, it's really just a sketch plan. It's not a full set of documents that would take. Maybe I'm mistaken about the depth of review and the kinds of materials. And one of the things that's not entirely clear to me is exactly, you know, what materials we'd be looking for in the sketch plan presentation. But I'm assuming that, I'm thinking it's not going to get, you know, the full engineering review that Bob so so excellently does, and the full, maybe, planning review and the full environmental review. So I wonder if the 22 days is really necessary, if there's a way to, I mean, I think it would facilitate the objective to see if there's a way to make that, you know, to suspend the 22 days and find something that's a little bit more, more encouraging in terms of schedule.
For the sketch, for the sketch meetings?
Yeah.
Sketch meeting, yeah.
My other point, same, in the same way, would be, I just want to make certain that people understand that when we say conceptual sketch review, sketch plan review, we're actually simplifying stuff. So what we are saying to them is you really can come with a sketch and just talk to us about it. Because if that's the intent, we need to sort of make that very, very clear, that this is a way for them to potentially understand and not have additional costs, not have to go through a longer process, and just get in front of, you know, friend, in the front of a group of people, who are just going to help them figure out what's the best way to move it forward. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah. Can I add something here? Because I want to put some reality in this situation. We rarely get a pre-application meeting where somebody hasn't already placed the house and what they want on a plan. Right? So they already have the idea of what they want, and we can urge them to come before the board for a concept discussion with whatever it is they submitted to us as part of that pre-application meeting. If few and far between come in and say, what do you think I should do with this property? Right?
It would be inappropriate of them to do that, really, because they're the ones that are supposed to be making the proposal for you to react to.
Right.
Right.
No, but the question here is, if we're giving this option, right, Sabrina, if we're giving this option, not making it sound burdensome in whichever way we can, would be.
Right, and typically today, like when we talk about coming before the planning board, we offer up a sketch. Ever since we had the discussion, you know, people will come in, we'll offer up a sketch discussion. You know, we don't see a lot of them today. What we're seeing today are a lot of people who own property, and they're looking for zoning changes. So it's really, you know, how do you imagine doing this? And, you know, they have to go to the town board and have a discussion with the town board because they're talking about legislative changes. You know, but, but we will offer up, you know, come before the planning board with a concept for a concept discussion. But pretty much everyone has an idea of what they want.
I think the point, though, is a good one about, you know, what, what do we want the applicant to submit for this concept sketch plan review? In my mind, those applicants that are coming to the board for a sketch plan review, in my mind, they wouldn't be subject to the same submission requirements than an applicant who is submitting a formal application would be. You know, I would defer to staff as far as the timing, whether the full 22 days is needed. But as far as, you know, 12 copies of full-size plans, I don't think we're looking for full-size, you know, plans at this point. It's really just more of a concept drawing.
Right, come and put your plan on a screen, you know?
Yeah, so maybe what you, maybe what, what the board can do is come up with a list of submission materials that would help you in the sketch plan review, sort of a baseline of data and information that you would find necessary in order for you to give, you know, meaningful and informed comments to that potential applicant and use that, and maybe include a new section in the rules of procedure to list what those materials are that you would be looking for the applicant to submit.
So this is critical. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Bob. Oh, you go ahead, Bob.
Well, just real quick, I mean, Sabrina's point, you know what's critical, too? I think a lot of times we'll look at a plan that's presented, and, you know, we'll say, well, what about over here, over there? And I think it's critical sometimes that they should submit conceptual plans and not spend a lot of time and money and effort with different locations for, as far as alternatives, especially when it comes to wetlands encroachments. I think that's a lot of time they can save money and effort because a lot of times they'll have too much in the wetlands. And by the time they come to the board, they find out it's a no-go. So I mean, I think it's critical, too, to have alternatives and maybe put some sort of wording in this streamlining process to help them out as well, just as a thought.
Yeah, excellent. So the position of the board is not come to us, we'll tell you what to do. The position of the board is bring us what you would like to do, and we will, we will help you figure out, you know, how to get it done. And, and in that light, it's bring us what you would like to do early so that it will be more efficient, yada, da, yada, da, yada, to get it done. I, I guess Sabrina, it'd be helpful when you say people come to you in a pre-application meeting and then say, this is where I want to put, let's just say, put a house, this is where I want to put the house. What kind of documents do they typically come with? Do they come with a conceptual site plan? Or they come with a fully engineered plan, a set of drawings? What do they come with?
It varies. Sometimes they have the engineer coming into the pre-application meeting, presenting their engineering plans. You know, a lot of times they have a rough sketch of what will be an engineering plan, and we say you need to show the septic, the reserve areas, you know, the water connection utilities. And, you know, we tell them what needs to be on the plan for you to entertain it as an application. But pretty much, you know, they come, they say, this is where my driveway is going to go, this is where the house is going to go. And we say, are you sure that's the best way to do that? Given the, you know, then, and we ask, we, a lot of times, we will run some environmentals. If they give us a property in a map, we'll run the environmentals on it so that we have a foundation for understanding how complex this is in regards to what they're trying to build. You know, we have resources and we guide them to our GIS site where they can download the resources, you know, so that they have an idea of what they're walking into.
Are we anticipating this, this sort of sketch, conceptual sketch review before they do this process with you or after? Are we doing both or in lieu of one or the other?
Typically, we do not give applicants application materials until they have a pre-application meeting. Okay, we don't, we don't put our applications on the website for people to just grab and then submit. We require a pre-app meeting.
So if I were to come and not know the rules and decide I want to, you know, build, let's say, an accessory unit, and I come for this conceptual meeting to, with you, then the idea here is, would come with some, some material here to the board?
Tell us what you want to do.
Right, so I would tell you, Bob, and others in the planning, on the planning staff, what I want to do. Then I'm coming here to this board and presenting the same thing? Is that the intention?
Or maybe informed by the comments that are received from town staff, maybe the concept is tweaked a little bit further. And then, and then the potential applicant comes before your board for additional.
In that meeting, we are adding this for them to get in front of us before they go
full-blown application.
The full load of drawings and applications, got it.
Yeah, now this is a. Um, oh, sorry, I was just going to ask, what is the typical timeframe that you see between when an applicant comes to you for a pre-application meeting and when an application is actually submitted? What do you typically see?
Sometimes it's a month, sometimes it's three months.
A year.
A year. You know what I'm saying? It's really, we've had applicants come, and, you know, Bob is excellent at doing the background work, going, you don't have a lot here, why are you even before us? You know, I, I mean, we do our homework when we get somebody in that wants to do something to make sure that they can do what they're asking them be done. You know, and we, we do suggest the sketch plan, the sketch meeting with you guys, you know, because it is right now $200 or $250. They come and they discuss their project with you. Most applicants do not want to do that. They want what they want, and they want to go before you. They want the application, they want to get going.
So, but Sabrina, is this, is this something where we are trying to encourage folks like me? Like, let's say I want to build an ADU, and I come in front of, you know what I mean, like, people who don't know enough? And you're just making it easy, and so they need to come in front of us, you, and just figure out the process somehow?
That is, the figuring out the process, that's a lot of what happens at a pre-application meeting. You know, we give them the ins and outs. You need 12 copies of materials. You need to make sure you have a zoning compliance table on your plans. We set forth the expectation that, you know, you, if you have wetlands, you'll need a wetland permit. If you're removing trees, you'll need a tree removal permit. You know, we give the applicants the guidance as to what is required. What we cannot give them guidance on is your decision-making authority and your process. You know, they always say to us, well, how long do you think it would take? And we can't weigh in on that.
But you can give it, at least the, the sort of the framework, right? You'll submit an application, you'll appear informally before the board, there'll be a public hearing, and there'll be a decision at some point, like, just the basic step, as far as how much time it takes to get through those.
And then we say, how much time? And I'm like, it really depends on you and how efficiently your consultant team responds to the requests of the board, and you provide the information that's being asked for. You know, we've seen projects take three years and other projects take three months.
So it's not, so just to sort of clarify this and maybe get it back to, we're not looking at something which would be obligatory. We're looking at something which would be their choice. And Bob's language, which is urge, and I think that's good language, that suggests that, you know, it might be in your best interest if you haven't already done all your engineering plans. It might be in your best interest to get in and get a little bit of feedback from the board, who are eventually going to review this thing anyway. So I think we're down to, if we agree that we want to do that, I think we're down to what's the timeframe for a submission and what would be the submission materials for that? And I leave it up to Bob and to Bob Seoli and to Sabrina and to Dennis, if he's on board on the call. You know, what, what would be something which would be appropriate and useful, which at the same time isn't onerous, right, to the applicant?
I think that sounds good. And just to throw in one, one example, a drawing is worth a lot of words, and so are photographs worth a lot of words. So that when everybody gets, you know, what are the, the right things that they should bring in that can be created efficiently in the minds of staff, you know, that's the way this should go.
I want you to know, I, I ask for photos in virtually every application that comes before you, and rarely do we get them.
I must say, Sabrina does a wonderful job telling them the procedure, telling them what they need on the big picture. And we do give them good guidance on that, but, you know, again, to Sabrina's point, it's all dependent on how well and how, how well they understand and how good the consultants are, which is always difficult to control.
I think it'd be, it's important somewhere in this, and again, I'm thinking about, as Kanan has alluded to, that someone who really is perhaps a little bit unsophisticated, not someone who's a practitioner in the area. And then the other problem that we have is sometimes we get practitioners who are actually very knowledgeable, but not knowledgeable in terms of what Newcastle does, or how, what are necessarily our local rules are. So it seems to me at some point early on, and I don't know if you guys do this already, but they need to identify, we need to identify the constraints, and they need to understand what those are right away, based on our code. Again, we're not going to plan your, your, your application. But again, I think you probably do this, but, you know, here are the wetlands, understand that this is a 150-foot area. This is the buffer, this is what we normally do. We have steep slopes, you're going to trigger out, you're going to trigger a SWIP if you do it this way. If you do it this way, you're not going to have a SWIP. You know, all those kinds of things, I think, are critically important upfront to identify those. And I don't know if, it seems to me it's awfully difficult for you guys to identify all that without a pretty detailed drawing, so I don't know what.
Aren't they doing that? At least when the meet, when we get the meeting notes, I feel like reading through the notes you give us sort of give you that information, at least us as a board, exactly what the constraints are and exactly what we're looking to, like, what are the exceptions that we should be looking out for in each application?
Yeah, that's typically based on a full application.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, right. You know, that's after. That stuff, yeah.
I don't know. Bob Seoli, in, in, in the case of what the kinds of things you would be looking at, and everybody would be looking at, would be at a minimum, a survey. And a survey which has identified on it any wetlands that might be there or not be there would be, I think, maybe the, the, the critical, some of the critical, maybe there's more, but underlying information which, you know, keys up, tease up, what might be issues that they need to address. Is there anything else you would, you would want to see, Bob, in a meeting like this?
Conceptual plans, I mean, let's be honest, if they do, any good plan does need grades on it, and we'll always let them use the GIS base. They wouldn't have to go out and get a topo or a survey. Uh, they wouldn't have to go out and get a topo or a surveyor based, which is more money. So no, that would be the minimum, you know, where the house is gonna be, any type of grading, proposed grading. Uh, any type of location of the structures, the previous areas, and most importantly, the wetlands and trees. Uh, I think they can get a very good indication of that on conceptual plans. Sabrina, do you agree?
I do agree, I, I will say, you know, we, we do have applicants who come in without the topography on there or the grading, do you know, that is expensive for somebody to undertake. Um, if they don't already have it or they don't, you know, we, we point them to again, our GIS or two foot, or two foot to, topography. Um, you know, I think we, we would want them to try and obtain as many resources as they possibly could to give you a sense of the challenges with the properties. But I don't know that we would, you know. I, I guess I'm thinking of the different, the different people that come in and what we tell them.
Well, like, for example, the, the wetlands, you know, information about wetlands, you know, to require somebody to go out and get a delineation before coming in for a sketch plan, maybe onerous for an applicant. Um, but Westchester County GIS has a layer that you can turn on and print out a map of your property that shows you know, potential wetland areas based on GIS information, right?
Right, and so, so I think we could get a, a general sense, I wouldn't want them to go out and hire the professional and spend that money. And you know, they, there's resources they could use that would give a sense of what they're looking at that the board could use to have a conversation.
They can do the same thing with the trees, right? Sabrina, they can get like an aerial. You can, Dennis could look at and get some sort of idea and the board can as well about how many trees, whether it's forested or open lawns. So I mean, there's a lot of time-saving devices they can use that's at their disposal to do it conceptually without getting a consultant or surveyor or a tree expert or a wetlands expert.
So just. Is that Dennis?
Yes, Dennis, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize, I could say you guys, great segues. You know, I, I, I view that as important because to me, it's, it's not only how best to do your project, but uh, we've had people who, you know, when they understood sort of the significance of the resources, you know. It almost, you know, can make them think, well, can I even orient or can I even locate a project, let's say, relative to the wetlands as I had originally envisioned, so, you know, to, to Bob and Sabrina's point, now we've almost put them down the road of alternatives because we've sort of alerted them, this is going to be, you know, a, a significant endeavor if you insist on you know, jamming this in, so to speak, and worrying about the wetlands, and I could speak to the trees for one particular applicant who I, you know, who had a pre-meeting with us, who I still haven't seen bring their proposal across for a forested area. When I informed them that I wasn't going to allow the use of GIS as the final survey for area of forest they were going to clear, that, you know, I would need to know what trees you're removing, how many, and then I had to also inform them of, you know, because of the type of project that it was that since replacement wasn't gonna be an option, what, what the Tree Bank Contribution Fund, you know, is and to, you know, Chairman Kirkwood's point. They were not familiar with that with other towns, let's just say that where they had done similar, even adjoining towns where they had done similar projects, so. So, so I, my impression's been that this pre-application meeting has done sort of, sort of a good job in, um, you know, a go, no-go, almost, you know, uh, in, in addition to, you know, sort of helping an applicant along who does make the go decision. So that's much you said.
Right, and even on wetlands, don't forget, you know, uh, just because they have something on a GIS. I think our code requires delineation within, what is it, every year, two years? So that's another thing that they need to be aware of, that again, you know, at some point you're gonna be required to go out there and have that wetland delineated if it's, if it's too old. Uh, maybe that, maybe we don't have that in other towns and other villages, but we have it here, so again, you know, don't be shocked and surprised.
So, I, I'm guessing that, that you were talking about, um, the expense of preparing, uh, documents for this conceptual meeting, this, this medium conceptual plan. And a concept plan, and, um, I think that there is a, probably the first go-no-go is in the pre-application meeting with the town staff, right? And the town staff, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm sure this is true, tell them, look at the project and tell them what it is they are going to be, need to be doing, the kinds of materials and studies and permits that for their particular project they're gonna have to get. And, um, letting them know, you know, the kinds of documents that need to be prepared for all that. And Sabrina, you said sometimes it's three months, sometimes it's a year, I imagine sometimes it's never, I mean, they just never come back. And that's not your fault, it's not the town's fault, it's just that they just decided it's just not, you know, it's too heavy a lift for what they want to do, which is fine. So, but if it's a go for them from that pre-application meeting, they're gonna have to do a survey anyway. They're gonna have to find out where the wetlands are anyway as part of the process that goes forward. So some of this material that I think might be useful to us, they're gonna have to do anyway, and we're just suggesting that get it, put your concept plan on, on the, a mapping or whatever it might be that shows where you're gonna put these things so that we can, so that we can, you know, help you out in the beginning. So I don't think it's onerous to say, well, you know, gee, you have to have a survey, maybe for the preliminary meeting, uh, GIS information is fine and that's fine with me. But sooner or later, if they're gonna go ahead, they're gonna have to do, you know, what everybody has to do.
So Tom, are you saying that they should have a survey when they come to our, to, to review with us?
I'm saying that whatever the town staff is comfortable with. With regard to, because they advise us on these things, what is comfortable with for them to do their due diligence at the concept plan level, I'm comfortable with.
Okay.
So I, I think if you were going to do, you know, one of these corporate flow charts, nothing I'm suggesting that's what we want to do here. But, you know, obviously the pre-application meeting is required, so we have to start with that. And then from there, I think during that meeting, then at that point, as you guys identify the constraints, the issues, the problems, blah, blah, blah. What you might want to do now is take our thoughts, go back, think about it. Maybe before you start committing even more resources with your concept, now is the time where you, and quickly. You know, and not, not twenty-two days later, but quickly we can get you before the planning board to meet with, not appear before, to meet with the planning board. And, and, uh, and maybe, you know, you'll hear more from them in terms of even some of the other things that they're going to be looking at and concerned with. You know, you know, we, we talk a lot about the visual resources and, and whether that's in the code or not, to what degree and where. Um, those are the kinds of things that they need to be aware of, also it seems to me upfront, because if they're going to put you know, a structure somewhere that's, you know, maybe it meets zoning, but you know, it may not be the preferred location, it may be the preferred height, uh, whatever. These are the kinds of things it seems to me that could be, and of course, this is optional, they could just sit there and say, you know, that's fine. You know, we'll just, we'll just go from here, but maybe, um, you know, you guys at staff can guide them and say what you may want to do now, your option, uh, and we'll, we'll try to, you know, expedite it so it doesn't take up, um, uh, you know, significant additional amounts of time is with this information that you have, go back, think about it, come back to us and, and why don't you just give them a dry run and, and we'll get some quick ideas without having to do forty-seven copies and, and all the things that are gonna be, you know, with all the stuff on there that we're going to require at some point. It seems to me that would be, that's the usefulness, it seems to me, uh, after after, you know, staff has ground them up in the first meeting, uh, and then, then we have our second swing at them. Um, but seriously, I, I, I think you guys do a very good job and, and tell these folks, but there are times, and we've seen it, where we have you know, uh, folks who, who haven't been before us before, applicants, um, um, engineers, architects, whatever it might be. Yeah, exactly, attorneys, and sometimes you, you see, they're, they look like deer caught in the headlights, like, what? Where did that come from? And, uh, yeah, this is what we do, why do you, why do you do that? Well, we're not gonna answer why, we, we just do it. So, um, uh, I, I think that, there's the, uh, so I, I, I think, I may have had it backwards, I think, you know, again, work on that, that first meeting and then give them the option. Um, is, is something that they might want to do, um, and push it that way, uh, if they, if they are, are so inclined. So obviously you're gonna have a bunch of people are gonna say, uh, we're not so inclined. When can we be on the, uh, you know, we'll get our stuff and we're gonna have a full application, we'll have it ready in two weeks, when do we, when do we go?
And another thing that just comes to mind, um, thi- this one-page document is for, uh, meetings with the planning board. But somewhere we should have a note that says this, none of these meetings can occur until you've had a meeting with the staff.
That's bullet number two. First one's, it's required, the first, uh, second bullet.
I don't read it that way, it doesn't say anything. The first one says the planning board meets, doesn't say when the staff meetings are. The second one says a pre-application meeting is required and it seems to me that it's, uh, just to schedule an appointment, but with whom?
It should say town staff.
Yeah.
For the second bullet.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
I added, so, sort of anticipating the, that, that sort of comment, like, to, you know, that you're looking for further information. I added under key points for applicants in the, the parentheses, um, at the top in the heading. Note that, you know, this is not, if someone were to, to, to receive just this one sheet of paper, I wouldn't want someone to, to get the impression that this is it, these are all the requirements. So I, I added that reference, you know, to see the planning board rules of procedure and the town of Newcastle code for further information.
Right.
Um, so hopefully if someone has a question or wants further information, they'll see that and know where to look.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to put that in red, because that's a big deal, right? I mean, I mean, I've, I've, I've been facetious, but, uh, it really is important, you know, maybe there's, you can punch up the language a little bit, but I totally agree.
Yep.
So, um, I, I, I feel that it's a good thing to offer this. Remember what we're trying to do here, the, the main objective is to make this all more efficient and easier for applicants and this is an option they could take advantage of, which we think is gonna be helpful in that regard. Uh, and I, I personally think that at the pre-application meeting of the town staff, uh, can sit down with the applicant, encourage them to do the, uh, the sketch plan and then define for them key to their particular application, what materials should come, instead of us sitting here and say, everybody has to do this, everybody has to do that. Let the town staff decide what the important, what the important points are so that we're not, you know, asking for stuff that we really don't need to see. And let that be at their discretion. So the only other thing is, I, I think is, is it twenty-two days? Should it be twenty-two days? Cause that's another cycle in the, in the, twenty-two days is typically for a full application and all the technical documents that that come along with, that, uh, require really in-depth review, uh, I'm just wondering if you know, we can find a way to make this, again, to make it easier and better for the applicants without overburdening the town staff.
Would the planning, oh, sorry, I was just gonna ask, would the planning board be expecting review memos from town staff for the concept plan review? Typically, in my experience, when I've experienced concept plan reviews in other municipalities on the applicant side and on the, the board attorney side, there usually are no memos from, from municipal staff.
That's fine. I mean, I, I would be happy to provide you with a copy of the pre-application form.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Um, I think that would be helpful to you in the sense of, of, of a consent meeting, because then you can see what the permits and requirements would be and the conversation high points that they've had with town staff to inform your discussions.
And that's a document that you already have, that you don't have to create as a result of the sketch plan request.
That's great.
Yep, I think that would be very helpful, good idea. Good.
So I think that's what really drives the twenty-two days, is the, the need for town staff to process the application and then review it and get it out to, to all of you.
So in this, in, this is not a public, a, a public hearing, um, uh, agenda then can be, it could be put on the agenda, what, seven days before the meeting? Is that, what would, what would be appropriate for just one of our typical meetings for something like this?
I, I thi- I think it's, uh, we need, Felicia, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a seven-day lead time for publication of the meeting notice?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we would need seven days and to be quite honest with you, staff reserve Thursdays for pre-application discussions, every other Thursday or every Thursday, if that works with applicant schedules. Sometimes we do them on Wednesdays, so we can fit it in.
Great. Good.
Oh, should it be a seven-day submission requirement or like a ten-day to give you time to update an agenda and get it out for publication? Or?
I, I think that that's Felicia's call, you know, typically, Felicia, when do you send the agenda for publication? What day is that typically?
So I try to have the agenda ready for publication on the Wednesday before the meeting.
So we would need to have it the Thursday before.
Oh, that's not even.
And that really doesn't give much time for any reviews or getting things to.
We're not reviewing, it's a matter of getting, of, of having them come into the board.
Right.
And talk, so there would be nothing other than you putting this as a concept discussion on.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not like you need to send copies of anything, we don't need to process anything, we just need to put it on the agenda, make sure it's published on the agenda.
Yeah, so Sabrina, to that point, do we need to say uh, the ten collated copies, and this might be a rookie comment, but do you need any of those printouts and?
No, no, nothing, I think, I think the most that they're gonna have is they're gonna bring to the discussion, let's say it's a Zoom meeting. They're gonna put up on the screen a sketch plan with information on it.
Perfect.
And we're gonna, we're gonna provide all of you, if, if it's going to go on the agenda, a copy of the pre-application meeting form, which we will have already generated.
That's great.
That should be fine, good, good idea.
I think the, the last point you had was about the no more than two appearances versus otherwise, Bob.
Uh huh, yes.
No, I, I'm just saying that's the other item to discuss.
Yeah, on, on this, uh, one, one-page sheet, yeah.
So, um, I, I completely, uh, agree with you, Bob, that we really can't reasonably, uh, limit ourselves because of the unknowns and because of just history of knowing how these things can sometimes go. Um, so I'm not even sure that, that this ought to be in here about uh, endeavoring, I mean, this, and the planning board will endeavor to schedule. I mean, that's really like note to self, right? This is what we will try to do. It's really not very useful for the applicant to get that information. Um, I think it really is, uh, a good note to ourselves and maybe that's a discussion we want to have about that. But I'm not sure if it, if it has a home on this, uh, on this list, or it needs to be somehow. Doesn't, it, it needs to be modified somehow?
I took Chairman Kirkwood's, um, comment to mean that he was recommending to have it struck from both the summary sheet and also the rules of procedure altogether. Was that, was I taking your comment correctly, Bob?
Yeah, yes, I, and I think that's, I think Tom's comment makes good sense, um, yeah. Again, um, it's really internal information.
Yep.
So the phrase, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I, I, I think, uh, the more I look at it, I think we just strike the whole thing. They don't need to know, I mean, you know, if they get the delightful call and says, we're gonna, we're gonna see you one time and we're gonna have a resolution ready for you, there's not gonna be any objection, they'll be very happy and, you know, and that's it. Um, I, I don't think we necessarily have to publish this and, and people pushing staff that would please, you know, get the jackass to agree to have, uh, just one meeting so we can get the resolution out. And, uh, do whatever you can, I, it's, it's just inappropriate, so I think that's, I think, Tom, that's a very good point, it's all internal, we don't really need to do this. I mean, I think we, we need to be cognizant of it, uh, and that should be our goal. Uh, do it as soon as practical, I think we, for the most part, we, we do this all the time. Uh, now we have this new thing about, uh, you know, the so-called one and done, uh, which we've had success with now one application. But we might have more of these in the future, I, I, I think that's, uh, yeah, I, I think striking the whole thing about public hearings is fine, makes good sense. And the rules tell them, it's going to be a public hearing if it's required under our rule or not.
So to strike it from the summary sheet and the larger rules of procedure or just from the summary sheet?
I think the summary sheet, the rules for procedure.
Was the initial intent to just sort of indicate to them that we're gonna have a tighter timeframe? Is that why it was in there in the first place?
And I think it was really.
I, I mean, I put it in the summary sheet just because I was pulling out. Information from the rules of procedure that I thought would be of, you know, of, of note to an applicant when they're. Putting together their application materials and putting together their, their schedule, um, to kind of anticipate what to expect. Time, time-wise for their application for budgeting purposes. Um. That, 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 that there is that option. That, um, for the chair to call for just one, you know, to call for the public hearing at the first meeting.
I mean, I think from a perspective of, again, I'm just putting in a newbie applicant's hat, hat on, and I'm thinking. It's good information to have, that how long is this process roughly gonna take me? But what you were saying is that any information we give them would confuse it. Is that, that's what I'm hearing, because it's possible we can say yes in one go, or it might take three meetings, or it might take four meetings. So we don't wanna put that information.
Right, and any other issue is, um, again, we're gonna have a meeting with staff, and staff can indicate. This may very well be an application where we can see you just one time, and, uh, it might be suitable, and we'll see, we'll, we'll get back to you, let you know. I mean, and the other stuff, um, it's very difficult to predict, and I, I think it's, um. It's, it's self-limiting and, and, uh, restricting us.
I mean, the way I see this is, this is really meant for. Sort of the newbie applicants, right? I mean, it's not meant for the folks who are coming armed with like two different. Um, attorneys and consultants and, you know, they, they know exactly what they wanna do. Those are the folks who, who are not necessarily gonna. Ask this question because. Either they know what's involved or they, they know how to get, navigate this process.
So, remember, it is a different, it is slightly different municipality to municipality as far as what the nuts and bolts of an application are. Um, so even, you know, an experienced engineer or an experienced architect or, or experienced attorney. And, you know, who processes land use applications throughout, you know, the Hudson Valley. If this is their first time in Newcastle, I think that these rules of procedure will be very helpful. Um, to understand what the expectations are for applicants and sort of the, the process that the board goes through.
Yeah, and that has a benefit, of course, in that it, it alerts the applicant. In black and white, in more detail, that, uh. If you wanna go through the whole thing and you have a tough site, you're gonna have to do a lot of work. On, on the contrary, if it's a very simple project, well then, uh, we'll be able to get it through faster.
Yep. Okay. So we, we pretty well settled then on the one sheet, the, the executive summary, what we wanna see?
Well, I am.
I am too.
Okay. Good. Thank you again, Jennifer, so if you can, uh. Rearrange some of those things, we'll be all set. Now, the, the longer version, of course, many of the same issues are, are, are present. Um. There. Or ours, does anyone, I mean, again, the conceptual sketch plan review, it's almost the same exact language, so we'll just change that around, uh, from the sheet. And, uh, seems to me on the rules of procedure as well. The submission requirements, I guess, we're all spelled out in terms of a little bit more detail, uh, in terms of the numbers, et cetera. Um. There were some changes here that I, that Jennifer has incorporated in here that I'd suggested to her. First was, uh, under five, setting the agenda. There was one item in, uh, is it five C? Um, so we had comments on this, I think Tom had a comment on it, question on it. And last version was unanimous consent of all planning board members present at the meeting, and, uh, I thought that was a little bit. Overly rigorous as well, so I, I put majority consent of all members of the planning board present. Um. Um, I don't, I, I just don't think it's gonna be a big deal, but I, uh, anyway, it just seemed to be, and I understand that the Robert's Rules of Procedure. Uh, often refer to it as, uh, unanimous, but I thought that was probably more appropriate, we can talk about it. Um, the other thing we need to talk about seems to me is the order of business. Where do we put in extensions? And then again, if we're going to have sketch reviews, where do we put the sketch reviews? Do you wanna put them in after publics and after informals? Um, extensions, it seems to me should go in before resolutions, so we don't hold people up. But just, you know, whatever you guys think is, is appropriate, uh, those are just. Two, I mean, we see a lot of extension requests and, um. I think we should put them in there somewhere. And I personally think it should go in. Somewhere just before resolutions or just after. I hate to see people standing around, sometimes representatives come in for an extension, they're there for thirty-eight seconds and they've had to wait two hours, but. Um, whatever you guys think is appropriate is, is fine by me. Any thoughts on it?
If it's a short business, I would put it right up front, just knowing what it feels like to be on the other side.
As, as the first item?
Yes, if it's, if it's the fastest, we should put it up right up front, is my thought.
Usually very fast.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that, Sabrina, Jennifer, any? Are we, we've done that one, whenever we had, what we used to beat live and we had delays. One particular engineer trying to figure out how to work the computer, we would throw in a couple of extensions to just make some progress on the agenda. So it'd just make us feel better before we got to eleven o'clock.
You know, we, we can always do time extensions and minutes upfront. You know, it, it, you know, it, again, now that we're doing the pre-agenda meetings type of thing, we can, we can take more liberty to try and get. People out the door quicker instead of waiting around.
Well, minutes, minutes are kind of.
They don't need us, I mean, they don't want to either, yeah. You probably wanna do minutes last, no, Sabrina?
Yeah, we have.
Huh?
Yeah, I would do that last, the way we have it now. Frankly, but extension requests, we can put, i- is that okay? Does people think it's a good idea, put it up top and just be done with them? Makes us feel like we're making a lot of progress.
Yeah.
Checking off a lot of items.
Yep.
Uh, and then the sketch, uh, meetings, uh, sketch considerations. With informals or just after informals, or what do we think?
Right.
I would.
After extensions.
I think they should be informal because.
Uh huh, okay.
You, no one is gonna come in with a complete picture that we would normally ask for in a public hearing.
Right.
So.
May I just say, if you wanna encourage this process, I would put them as early to, at the top of the agenda. So that they're out of the door before we have any public hearing, that's my thought, but I don't know how it works in terms of.
Well, we like to have, uh, don't like to have the public have a way around and listen to, uh, some of our drone. So, um, but by the same token, sometimes it's a very controversial thing, and that's a very good strategy is to have it much later. The public hearing, everyone's, uh, you know, dying on the vine, but seriously, I think it's, it's really best to have public hearings, have that first.
Okay.
Interested, they wanna be there, and we shouldn't have to keep them out, uh, waiting for us. That's my opinion.
Makes sense. No, I didn't think of that.
Yep. Um. I took out.
So you want concept before or after informal hearings?
I, I think Dick's idea, we're gonna have informals and concepts, so put it together, and we can schedule them together, it's basically the same sort of thing. Is that okay?
There's a definite difference between a concept discussion and what will be involved in that versus your typical application informal discussion.
Okay, so you wanna separate it? We can, I mean, we can separate it and we can.
It's not about separating, it's about how to order it. Do you wanna hear somebody's, do you wanna discuss somebody's concept before you go through the regular application review?
I think, frankly, I think the informal people have already done their due diligence, so they should come first before the sketch people.
I think that's probably right because the informal people. Usually are bringing a team with them, right? And they're paying for all that time, and so they, they'd be on a, uh, uh, cognizance of that.
Yep, and they, and they've done their due diligence at that point, or a lot of it. And, um, it seems to me that we should give them a little seniority on the list. So, informals and then, um, the sketch, uh, discussions.
When he's done with that one.
Okay. Um. Seven D on the next page. There had been a limitation of five minutes, uh, you know, they'd have to ask for approval for longer than five. We've had many, many experts who've really had to take longer than five minutes, so I just thought that was unduly. Short, and, uh, I mean, the main thing on these is when we have public hearings is when folks start getting up and saying the same thing over and over. And we, we, we counsel them just to, you know, if they have new substantive comments, that's fine, but. Um, I, I hate to, you know, shut down people when, uh, uh, five minutes might be too short. The, on E, the next one, uh, Jennifer, I. I referenced it also with J. Um. J, on the next page where he said at the close of public hearing or as otherwise provided, we probably ought to do that as well at the end of E. As well, or otherwise, otherwise, uh, provided, you know, sometimes we have a public comment period afterwards, after we close, you know, the verbal public hearing. Just to make it consistent.
Yeah.
Hey, I, I have a couple of.
Sure, please.
Minor things, under four F.
Yep.
I would suggest put the word the after once and before site. But on the, the next page in, in number five. Um, we have setting the agenda. And, um. You know, we say at the end, the, the new words are. When determining whether they add matters to the agenda, et cetera, but, but any matter involving an application shall not be placed on agenda without reasonable public. Reasonable notice to the applicant, and don't we, don't we somewhere, where do we fit in? That you have to go, uh, and contact all your neighbors or make them aware that the project is, is, uh, potentially being considered. Uh, because we don't, we leave out the citizens in this setting the agenda thing, I think.
Well, that was, is, is on the application, isn't it? All the requirements in terms of notice, uh, whether it's our board or the ZPA. Those are all set forth on those applications, I believe.
And it's all in the code as well.
Yeah, I'm sure, but.
And, and some types of applications require notice to your neighbors when you submit the application. At most ti- for most types of applications, you're not notifying the neighbors, um, at least you're not legally required to notify the neighbors until the public hearing. I think as a matter of course, um, and Sabrina, Felicia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, um, their department has. Like a, a listserv sort of thing that, uh, they blast the agenda information out. Um, to a, a whole host of, of residents, um, before each agenda.
That's true, but this is a, it's not in this, uh, ru- set of rules for procedure.
Well, the set of rules, the set of rules are for, are for the planning board.
Somehow we have to, maybe we have to reference those other rules. And have a section for that, just so the public gets a sense that they're not being left out.
If, if we were to reference everything that is that they have to do, which is not in this document. This document might as well just go ahead and be the, the town code. I mean, I think that these are rules of procedure for the board, not necessarily rules of procedure. That the applicant has to go through in order to submit an application, because that's a, that's really a much more extensive. Uh, process with a whole set of legislative rules that go along with it.
Well, I can, I understand that point very well, and it makes sense and, and, but, but still. Um. Let me see, but still, you know, I, I think it just needs something that said, you know, tells the people. You know, that we're not leaving them behind, it isn't just the applicant and the board. And a reference to the, the section that says all these things would be good. And they can read it because it's public information.
I think that, doesn't it say somewhere here that they are responsible to, that every applicant is responsible to. You know, do everything that they need to do that's in the town code for doing all of this, it's in there. They've already been alerted to that, I think. So I, my, I still have a problem with setting the agenda because it says here that. That the majority of the board needs to approve, or if, or, and, or, I guess it's or, the chairman, uh, somebody. If, if there's something somebody wants to discuss, it's not in the agenda, uh, on the agenda for that particular meeting. And I just don't, I, I don't understand why this is, there may be, you know, Robert's Rules of Order, but. I don't understand why it should apply to this board. First of all. We're, if we're an independent board, but we're also independently appointed to the board. And each of us, I think, uh, has, uh, the right, and I, I think it's implied, maybe it's, maybe actually the one could be. Find where it's explicit, have the, the right responsibility when we think something is, uh, needs to be addressed, that we speak up and. And have the opportunity to bring it before the board. And I know that that's not going to be a problem on this board, but I do, that these are rules of procedure for. The board, uh, going forward, uh, for the future, and it just, I, it. I just don't see the point. Or the propriety of a board silencing a member. Saying, you know, three of us say that you can't talk about that, so you're not gonna talk about that. Or the chairman decides, uh, whether it is of public interest. Well, I'm sorry, but the chairman is not, the, the chairman really does have, I think, a role here in deciding whether it is. Um. Whether the, the, the word is here, which is good, within this jurisdiction. I think the chair really has a, a function there to decide whether that matter is actually within the jurisdiction of the planning board, and that's an important, important function. But, uh, to side, to decide whether it's a matter of public importance is not the chair's responsibility. And it shouldn't be the chair's responsibility. So I would strike all of this business about. You know, having to vote in order to talk about something which is not on the agenda. Only with the stipulation that if the chairman decides that, uh, maybe on advice of council or staff. That it's not something we can talk about, and the chairman, uh, agrees, then, uh, we don't talk about it. Otherwise, I just don't see the point of doing this, and I, I just, I just think it's wrong.
What others think on that? That's interesting. I mean, clearly the last sentence is important because that's, uh, that's critical. In terms that we can't talk about an application, uh, that hasn't been noticed, it's just not fair, obviously, to an application applicant. So we all know that, but.
On that point, Bob, on that last point, just so I understand, um, is it unfair or is it not permitted and not legal?
It's highly prejudicial, um, to, to the applicant and could affect. Um, you know, it, it, it could affect the, the record, uh, for the application. It, it's something that, that I, I would not recommend.
No, I agree with that stipulation as well, absolutely.
Right, so. So it's just, you know, I've been on the board, I guess, almost two years, and, uh, so Tom, I agree with you, uh, conceptually, that if. One of the planning board members wants to raise a topic, I mean. Uh, I don't see a scenario where the rest of us wouldn't be willing to discuss it, um, but, um. It feels like whenever that has come up, the response has always been, um, well, we need to notice it. Um, which is fine, um, but it just feels like, um, it's almost a non-issue. I guess the question is. If someone brings it up, are we then asking, should we vote on it and then notice it and then talk? And I, I don't know if that's necessary.
Well, as I understand, uh, from reading the statute over and over and over on this, just to be sure that I, that I have it right. Uh, the notice requirements, the specific notice requirements in the state statutes, and Sabrina and Jennifer can check me on this. Are with respect to, to public hearings. And there are specific notice requirements for that. Now, there may be an overlay of town requirements for noticing. Which, um, I am not familiar with, and I haven't found anywhere in the town code. which I am not familiar with, and I haven't found anywhere in the town code. So from my understanding, that we are supposed to submit to have an agenda. But there is no requirement that, that we talk about only what's on the agenda. And that we can't have a discussion with things that aren't on the agenda. And the agenda can be changed during the meeting. So I mean, we'll change agendas during the meeting because somebody doesn't show, it's not on the agenda. It's, it's not a requirement as far as I know.
So the meeting itself, there's particular state notice requirements for the meeting itself, for a regular meeting of the planning board, or for a special meeting, or a meeting called on an emergency. There's certain time limitations for noticing the meeting itself. The agenda is typically part of that notice, but that doesn't mean that the agenda is set in stone. The agenda is subject to change. You know, under, you know, strict Roberts rules typically aboard boards that really adhere to Roberts rules will have a vote at the very top of their meeting to really set the agenda to have the board members vote. Does everybody agree on this agenda? This is what we're going to talk about tonight. And, and, and they'll vote to set the agenda. You know, it's, it's unusual that boards adhere that strictly to Roberts Rules of Order. But you're, you're right, the agenda is subject to change. I think the notice, the noticing issue is to provide interested members of the public who may want to listen to, to the discussion of a board on a particular topic to provide them with advanced notice that that is going to be discussed at a planning board meeting so they can listen. And then also for planning board members and town staff and consultants just to have some notice of the topic that's going to be discussed at a meeting so that everyone can be adequately prepared to have a meaningful discussion. But long story short, we're not so short. An agenda is subject to change.
Right, right.
But that gets back, so, so thank you, Jennifer. That's very helpful. And I think answers Tom's question, which is the notice requirement is not as broad as we apply it. Is that fair to say?
Is not as broad as we apply it today, or?
Is not as broad as we've been applying it, because in every, in my experience, every time someone has brought up a topic, usually the response is we need to notice it. But the requirement to notice, is it just on public hearings like Tom?
It's, it's, as far as I understand, I guess we lost Jennifer, maybe she, we just lost her picture, but it's, it's on applications that have gone, are going to, or with, within the public hearing part of the process. Or I think on discussions with respect to legislation that the town board might have referred to us, unless I'm mistaken, if it's a legislated item or item under consideration for legislation, and we're talking about it, I think that that might be, might be a notes requirement with that. Is that correct?
No, no, it's, it's the meeting itself that needs to be noticed.
Right.
And then, yes, if there's public hearings, there's additional requirements for publication in, in official newspapers within a certain amount of time. There's, there's mailing requirements and other, other requirements for, for public hearings. But as far as, you know, an informal hearing on your, on your agenda, or a referral of a local law from, from the town board. Those are just agenda items that get added and taken away to your agenda. You know, as, as a matter of course, there's no, other than noticing the meeting itself, there's no specific notice requirements for, for those.
So in other words, a public, to discuss a referral, legislation referral, for example, that is, that doesn't require a public hearing, in other words.
Correct. Your, your board would not require a public hearing.
Right, right, right.
Town board obviously would.
Okay, I thought, I thought we did, but in any, in any event, we have been told that we can't talk about something if it hasn't anything, if it hadn't been noticed. Outside of the public hearing stipulation. And, and I've always thought that that's wrong, and I think that that's unnecessary. Because it, and I think it gets in the way of us just having a free flow discussion sometimes, and I think that we ought to be allowed to have.
Yeah, I think it just, it impedes the ability of the public to, who are, who may be interested in the topic that you're going to be, you're going to be discussing to, to listen and to have advanced notice of the fact that that is going to be discussed.
My guess is, that's fair enough, and I, I take it with that, but I would, I'm just going back in all the meetings that we've had in town hall. And how many members of the public actually show up for this kind of discussion? And maybe the members of the public may be listening or not listening now. On subjects that are that are of real interest in town, I, I think that, I mean, I'm just guessing that that's the kind of conversation that is a continuing conversation, you know, and would end up eventually being, you know, on the agenda. But still, I, I don't think I'm talking about, you know, really, really big things. I'm just talking about, you know, things of, of interest that might be something that maybe we should discuss that, you know, upcoming meetings. It just seems onerous and it seems unnecessary. And I, and most importantly, I also think that the, the stipulation that you need to have a majority vote in order to change the agenda on the day of the meeting, and that the, that the chairman has the, the authority to actually deny a change of the agenda is just wrong. It's, it's just wrong.
So I, I agree with that, and, and, and I'd be supportive of, of changing it to whatever the language would be to allow any member of the board to raise a topic, change the agenda. So long as it doesn't legally require to be noticed. And the language that's in here now with the, when determining whether to add matters to the agenda, consideration will be given as to whether sufficient notice has been provided. I, I'm fine with it. I think maybe because, I mean, I'm fine striking it, but I'm also fine with it because it, it's somewhat vague. It says consideration will be given, doesn't mean that's a requirement. And so maybe that gives us some flexibility if we think it's not appropriate to discuss, even though it may not be legally required. But I'm okay with striking it. I, I, I agree with Tom in the sense that ultimately the, the thought is if a planning board member wants to raise a topic to be discussed, we should have that discussion on, you know, on the spot. It doesn't mean that's the end of the discussion. Also, you know, with respect to inviting the public in, most of those topics that are raised informally end up being much longer discussions or appear on an agenda later. And two, at least while we're remote, these are still you know, recorded, right? And so a public member, the public can go back and view them.
Well, they're all recorded. I, I think these are good suggestions. And I, I think frankly, from my perspective, you know, I've always championed that, that kind of thinking, but I think still, still, the better practice is if we have an inkling of something that you want to talk about, I think it's better to have it on the agenda. I think it's better to have people prepared, because very often, Eldon, I think you hit it right on the, on the head. Very often, someone will raise something, but if we're not prepared, we're not going to have any kind of substantive discussion anyway. So we very often say, well, that's interesting to talk about. Let's, let's, let's look at this a little bit more in detail. If it's something like that, if it's just, you know, someone saying, by the way, I'm having a picnic, and you're invited, that's, that's one other thing. But if it's really something that has to do with business and not an application, it seems to me that the better practice is that we don't really engage in a, in a conversation or discussion of any kind of detail if, if we as members were unaware of this subject, staff is unaware of it. And again, we are watched by the public. They tell me, I haven't found anyone yet, but they tell me they were watched. So I think that's, you know, the better practice is try to give a heads up so we can get it on the agenda, but I think the, these are good points that if someone wants to bring something up. I mean, I, I try to end the meeting with, does anyone have anything else to talk about? And that would be the time to do it. I thought, I tried to amend this because I thought it was very harsh last time, because it was unanimous approval, and we talked about that, the rules. And it seemed to me that was overly restrictive. So I tried to bend that, but really, I, I think you guys made very good points. As long as we're not talking about an application that can prejudice our record. It seems to me that we can raise an issue. I, I still think that the better practice will be that we will not engage in a very substantive discussion if staff is unaware of it, if legal's unaware of it, if other planning board members are unaware of it. It seems to me that we need some input and education to make that a meaningful discussion. But I, I, I think it makes, I think it makes big sense. Again, I've said this before, I've never been on a board that did not permit that kind of observation discussion item. And I, I just was a little bit unaware in terms of the municipal area, certainly private, it's, it's private boards always do this. So again, I, I think the caveat, that last sentence is, is the, is the critical one. We have to be mindful of that. We have to be mindful of our record. But it seems to me that we can, you know, maybe put language in there that, you know, obviously agendas have been changed, they will be changed in the future. But the better practice is if you, if you can, if you know of something, let us know and let Felicia know, we'll try to put it on the agenda. Even if it's something that does have to be noticed, you know, seven days in advance.
Maybe this is one of those endeavor notes to self that, that, you know, if we have something to talk about that we want to bring up to the board, that it ought to be, you know, put on the agenda ahead of time. But that doesn't, that doesn't, that, that doesn't deny somebody the opportunity to talk about it if it doesn't end up on the agenda.
Correct, correct. Yep.
So if we, if we had a fixed, a fixed agenda, then the only small thing I can add is that that if we're going to have another discussion about something that's not related to an application, that topic should be just like today at the end of the session that we have.
Yes, yep, makes sense. Okay, good. Jennifer, I had a question for you, and this was really as a result of my recent Wolf class. They made a distinction between advice of council sessions, sessions and executive sessions. And the observation was made that rarely would a planning board ever go into executive session, that it would be advice of council session. So we make that delineation in here. I can't recall, because it's been a whole month since I went to the course, therefore I couldn't possibly remember what the distinctions were, but it was advice of council is what we normally do, we normally pursue. And perhaps we should note to ourselves, define what the executive sessions would be used for as opposed to advice of council.
So to technically speaking, for executive sessions, there's a specific list of topics in the public officer's law for topics that are appropriate for executive session. Advice of council is actually an exception to the open meetings law. You can, you are entitled to confidential advice from your attorney at any time without that being publicly noticed. You're not subject to the open meetings law when you are getting advice of council. So we can have a quorum of the board present. And it could be called on a dime, you know, the chair can call a conference call within 10 minutes, and we can have a quorum of the board without prior notice. And that's, that's perfectly acceptable. So that's an exception to the open meetings law. So that's sort of the distinction there. So there may be times when we do have an executive session. For example, if there's litigation pending against the planning board, that is an appropriate topic for an executive session. So to the extent that we have references in here to executive session, we might want to do like executive session slash advice of council or something like that.
Yep, I think so. And then, and actually on that last page on D, I think it's required in our town code as well as state code now, maybe just Westchester County. But members are really required to complete all training required by law, not, not encouraged or expected. So I think it really is a requirement. We should change it to required.
To be eligible for reappointment, you have to complete all of your hours, and that's a state requirement.
Right, state, yeah, yeah. And that is remind folks, it's, it's two hours every, every year.
I'm sorry, Bob, didn't many interrupt. I thought that it was, that there was, there may be a change in law. As Bob, maybe Bob, that's what you're referencing, but I thought that it was at the discretion of the local town board as to whether
The town, the municipality can exempt board, boards from that requirement. I think that's rare for that to happen, but there is an exemption provided for in state law.
I think at Wolf, they did not indicate that there was a single municipality in Westchester that exempted members from that requirement. So anyway, I, I think we should, you know, should change that word from expected to required.
Good.
Consistent with state law. Those are my thoughts. Did anyone else have more? Oh, I had, I have a technology question. Site visits, site visits. And we talked about topos and pictures. At some point, it seems to me that it's going to be more efficient to use drones. What's the deal with drones in terms of site visits, in terms of, you know, we're on a site visit, all of a sudden we have drones coming in from the neighbors? I don't know what, you know, those are probably general privacy laws, etc. But, you know, perhaps we can use those as a, as a tool for, for some of these site visits, or even some of the, the pre-application meetings to have this information from drones. So I don't know what it all means, but I know that's, it's, it's certainly out there and available. The technology is there.
Who's the town's expert?
Eldad, do you have more information on that? Like, do you guys use, now, I, I, I thought you probably know something about it.
No, I don't.
Okay.
That's because I drone on sometimes, doesn't mean I know about drones.
Very good, very good. I've just, I'm so impressed that that Bob is so woke on the subject of drones. It's great. I've got a couple of comments on 10 voting. This is a minor, very minor one. But it says every member shall vote either for or against resolutions or any vote, it says any vote, shall be for or against. And by this text, Canaan was actually in violation of this text because she couldn't vote for or against the minutes. So is it abstention not, not allowed, or what's the deal there?
It is, and that should be, yeah, that's a really good point, that that should be included there. Abstentions are, you're allowed to abstain.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That was 10 B, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And intensity also.
And I had one more, which actually is a pretty big one. So if you'll, you're going to bear with me. We talked about a number of times about us sort of being hard around ourselves and finding a way to give clear response to applicants and clear sort of recommendations and requests of them. And you know, I, I, I really think that, I really think we need to be serious about this and do our best to, to have an applicant walk away with a very clear understanding of what it is that we are looking for. And I think that it's probably under, with some language on that subject, I think. Where would that be? I think it's under number seven. Did I have it under seven? It's seven. Nope, it's not seven. It's before that, forgive me. Find it here somewhere. Agenda, maybe there's public, there's some public hearings. Oh, no, I know where it is. It's, it's what's expected of board members, membership expectations. It might be under 11.
Yeah, yeah. Might make sense there.
And I just, I scratched out some text which I'd like everybody to consider and see if, if this makes sense. Obviously, wording needs a lot of work, but the, I think the idea is here. To facilitate an efficient review process, the planning board will, here you go, will endeavor to conclude its review. Um, to facilitate an efficient review process, the planning board will, here you go, will endeavor to conclude its review with uh recommendations and requirements that are, oh, with recommendations and requirements that are concise. Oh, recommendations, if any, such shall be limited to, such request shall be limited to those that are, that receive a majority consensus of the sitting board. In other words, I think that if we when we have an applicant, we say, well, you think that, you know, I think Tom thinks you ought to do this, and Bob thinks you ought to do this, and and Canaan or whoever says, you know, I really think you ought to look at this. And maybe three of us on the board think that Tom is wrong. I mean, that we really don't want to see that, that we really think that maybe this is, is, you know, taking a step too far, or it's not that important. But nonetheless, um, the applicant feels that they have to go ahead and pursue that and, and respond to that. And they have to respond to, you know, the comments that, 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 uh, that everybody makes. And sometimes they're so diverse uh that there's, I imagine there's quite a bit of confusion. Now, I know that Bob uh always tries to focus back to, this is what now, this is what we think you should do. And there is a real effort that Bob makes, puts into making that statement. But um, I wonder if that statement is sometimes uh and not intentionally, but sometimes maybe too all-inclusive about everything. I mean, maybe if we sort of said, no, we really don't need to see that, we really, you really don't have to do this. These are the things that are, are really important to us, that will end up in a situation where these people uh have a better idea of what they're supposed to do, and their consultants understand, and, and they can make real progress on the application. Because I know there are times when they show up and they've done what we ask, and we look at it, and we say, well, you know, we sort of dismiss it sometimes. Well, that really, you know, that didn't pan out. And I think that we have been doing this enough, and we're probably in our separate fields, expert enough to know, to be able to have the intuition of when something's not going to pan out. And really not ask them to pursue something uh that really may not have any real benefit to the end, the end product. So I don't know how to articulate it any better than that, but if you think about what if we were a corporate board, right? Board of directors for some corporation? And somebody came up with a business plan that, you know, and, and it, it would be, I mean, I've sat on boards uh and business boards and it's, it's, it, the, the good ones are very, very clear about what they're doing, and very, very clear about what they need and, and what they, what they want to have done. And they send their troops out to do that, right? Um, now, I know that what we do is maybe a little bit more nuanced, but I think that if we could, if we could behave a little bit, if we could be a little bit more tough on ourselves to come to conclusions before the applicant walks out the door, I think it might be better for, for everybody and better for the board in the end.
I, I think that's a good point. I, I, I think what we should really emphasize is the consensus that we have with staff as well, by the way. The takeaways, what are the takeaways for this applicant? By the same token, by the same token, an applicant needs to be aware that there might be a board member who really has an issue with something, and that board member, you know, may be persuasive at some later stage uh on, on an, on an issue, and they need to understand also that it's, it's a group of five and you're going to need three. So I think it's, I think, Tom, your, your point is absolutely excellent. Uh, I've been told by the town board also, it's a very uh, uh, being graded uh by the town board on this, so they would like to see much more of this in terms of, you know, real takeaways so that we can give guidance, the, the firm guidance that you, we need a topo, okay? You need to show the other houses on the map, you know? You've got to listen to Bob Seoli, you've got to get his condition 8C satisfied before we can proceed. But by the same token, if I, if, if an applicant hears that Eldad may have a real serious concern, for example, on some sort of issue, they need to understand that. And they need to understand that uh maybe there's a way of satisfying, you know, with the takeaways and also trying to, you know, even though at that point, a majority of the board maybe is not convinced of Eldad's uh argument and concern. At a later point, it could be, so you may want to take a look at that as well, and, and that's not, not just board members, but also staff. So I think uh the takeaways, that's what we really need to emphasize, where we know we have firm stuff that, and very often we've heard that from folks. Well, what do you want us to do? You know, I'm not, I'm hearing different things. And sometimes they're not the best applicants, and that, you know, sometimes they're resisting, that's why they don't hear, but I think that's a very, very fair thing, a very fair um uh, comment uh and, and, or even complaint uh about similar stuff in the past. But by the same token, applicants need to be aware of the nuances in, in, in the discussion. You know, Dick may have an issue on water issues, and Dick is the water expert, and, you know, we may not catch on to it at that point, but at some later point, he may say, you know, this is just a non-starter, guys, and here's why. And then we, we have this issue, and if they haven't, if they've chosen to ignore those comments all along, you know, they do it at their own, um, at their own risk. So it's, it's, it's a tough balance, but I, I really think that uh the overall suggestion of having takeaways and the, you hear the, the things to do makes, makes good sense.
Well, I know, I, I think that, that, that your examples um are, are good ones. If Dick has a problem with um the, you know, some, some um issue, technical issue, um, and I may not understand it, and I rarely do, right? But because I trust Dick and his expertise, that um that this needs to be paid attention to, it thinks it needs to be paid attention to. It's like Bob Seoli staff, if Bob says, we've got, we've got to look at it, right? And that's a non-starter, whatever staff says they have to do as far as I'm concerned. But there are uh and, and Eldad on zoning and Canaan on affordable housing, you know, whatever the subject might be, the people who really, really are good at that stuff and have it in their toolkit are going to be articulate enough and are going to be trusted enough by the rest of the board to say, you need to pay attention to this. But there are things that are just sometimes, just offhand comments, right? That you might, that people, you know, we make, right? And sometimes these offhand comments end up being uh is, is, is sort of work tasks for, for applicants. So I, I, I'm not saying that we ought to cancel out the, the one person who has a big issue, and that person will let us know. But there's just, seems to me, there's just a lot of like noise, I hate to characterize it this way, but just a, a, a lot of conversation that is sort of wide-ranging, and gets a little bit amorphous and is not focused, and I just think that if we challenged each other every once in a while, right? To get what is irrelevant or inappropriate or unnecessary, just off the table. I think that that would be a responsible thing to do, and I, I know that we trust each other and enjoy each other's company enough that it, it won't be harmful to the board.
So I, I think that's um interesting and, and, and a very good goal, and one that I agree with. I, I'm just, and I heard your language, um, I'm just curious if, if, what's the best way to codify that sentiment? Sometimes, you know, it's like, it's challenging to, you know, even when you're talking about having a majority support the recommendations, I mean, you, you're not asking for an actual vote every time we make recommendations to an applicant, are you?
Well, um, maybe, maybe not. I mean, I don't know. Um, maybe, maybe uh Bob summarizes the, you know, what he believes the, 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 the high points are, and, you know, if, if, you know, I could say, or you could say, gee, I really don't think that one's important, you know, should we, we really didn't discuss this.
So that's, that's actually something that I, that I've just been thinking about. If there's a way to say, you know, there, there's a summary of, of kind of all the comments, and then Bob can say, are there any disagreements to this? Does anyone have an issue with any of these? Uh, I just don't know how to codify that, but that might be the way to go about it. Just ask if there are any, if, you know, kind of a, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace. So, you know, we send the applicants on their way, and that might be just give, give every board member an opportunity to say, you know what, I actually don't think we need to send them down path D of A, B, C, D, and E. I just don't know how to codify that, but I, but I.
But then also ultimately, ultimately someone has to, and I think, Bob, you would just have to make a call then, right? Like, and that's what, that's how it's normally being done. I mean, yes, you're talking about codifying it, but the idea is Bob asks, like, what is everyone's comment on this? And then we voice it, and then he sort of reasons around it and, and and puts out less noisy information for the applicant. And that's how I've seen it, and I think um that's a good way. I mean, there have been a couple that sort of get sidetracked into different conversations that get very, you know, caught in the weeds, but I do agree with what Bob is saying is that maybe they have to know, like, we, we can say, here are your takeaways, and here's what you need to go do. But that does not mean that the next time we come back, you may not have a different comment. Is, is that what you're saying? That's what Bob is saying, and
Well, it has to be flexible.
Slightly contradictory.
And I think the issue is not so much a vote, is really, uh, what I, I've always enjoyed with the board is I think that we've consistently always reached consensus on issues. We, you know, we're intelligent, we talk to each other, the people, we talk with applicants as well. So we reach a consensus, and it's, it's very often not just we're dictating to the applicant, we're hearing from the applicant and reasoning, reasoning with them. So I think it is really just trying to um codify, if you will, uh, the consensus on these various points that here, th- these are the takeaways. I don't know, you know, Sabrina, Bob, and Jennifer, and Dennis, um, have you heard, you know, more complaints in this area? Hopefully less, because we have been trying to do this a little bit more over the past couple of years. But I know that there have been times afterwards where you read some of the minutes, it's like, oof, wow, what was that about? Uh, so I, I don't, you know, what's the feedback that you're hearing from applicants?
Yeah, so I, I haven't received any direct feedback from applicants, but just, you know, my ex, my experience as being an applicant's counsel, I'll just say, it is incredibly helpful to, to have exactly what you're talking about here. Um, to, to, to be able to walk away from a meeting and know, okay, the board, at least a consent, a, a consensus of the board, understanding that that could change at the next meeting, but coming away from this meeting, the board is going to expect X, Y, and Z from me at the next, you know, when, when they see me again. Um, and to be able to endeavor to deliver that for the next meeting. Uh, I think that's really just so important and so helpful to an applicant, and ultimately helpful to the whole process, to help get that application progressing in the right direction. And that's not to say that the board can't change its mind. The board can always change its mind, the board can reevaluate the plan based on some new information and say, actually, you know, I, that isn't the right direction. I think you should go in this other direction. Um, you always have that discretion, but
We always use that.
But I think, you know, giving direction to an applicant at the end, as, as Tom suggested, and as you're all discussing, I think will be incredibly helpful. And, and I've seen you do it, I, you know, I've seen you do it on applications, some, as Canaan mentioned, some, you know, kind of go a little bit like this back and forth. Um, but I think those are some of the tougher applications as well. So, um, yeah, but no, I think this is all a really good discussion.
And I like, you know, it's subject to change. I like, you know, that could be, that's part of it. But uh, as Bob said, uh, many, 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 many times, we finally get to a consensus.
Yeah.
But this is a, this is a document that's not just for us, but we want to have it clearer for other people that join the board down the road.
Right.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
So as far as I think, oh, go ahead, Eldad.
No, you, you go ahead, please.
No, I was just gonna say, um, you know, I think that, including in the rules of procedure, the, the sentiment, the fact that, you know, you it's sort of your, your note to yourselves that you're going to endeavor to conclude each application with um, having the applicant walk away with the takeaways, the consensus items. Um, that's what I would suggest, and, you know, obviously in some different language, and I, I, I can work on that, and maybe take Tom's language and, and, and develop it from there. Uh, but that's what I would suggest, putting in your rules of procedure, not getting so specific as to say the chair will identify the items to be, you know, um, called out in a list and so forth. Um, because it, it may kind of just organically come out in a different way for various applications, but the overall purpose.
I think that would be really good, really useful. I mean, I, I think the easy lesson that we have here is frankly, is when, when Bob gives us his recommendations and his thoughts, you know, we, we basically tell the applicant, you've, you've got to comply with the town engineer's comments. We're not going to sit here and tell you, you know, we're not going to go out there and measure the water flow ourselves. You know, you're going to have to follow Bob and satisfy his, his recommendations. Well, very often, as you know, we also, uh, when we get toward the end of things, uh, sometimes they're unable to comply, but we also will, will look to Bob and say, are you comfortable conditioning these for later on, for compliance later on, that we can still get a resolution out with these as conditions? And we looked at Bob and his judgment on that, and I think it makes a big difference. I mean, I can imagine that there must be some towns and villages that will sit there and say, we're not doing this until we have everything done. And that could hold someone up, you know, years.
Yeah, but I think the point you raised also about confirming town staff's comments and directing the applicant that you need to address those comments is very helpful, because I think a lot of times, not a lot of times, but sometimes applicants may disagree with some of those comments, and ultimately, it's your decision as the planning board as to whether or not the applicant will need to comply with that or not.
Right, it's, it's always been my, my feeling, and I think it should be, personally, I think it should be the position of the board that the um comments from staff, they're really not discretionary. I mean, it's full stop, as far as I'm concerned. That it's the, it's, you know, that's what they are there to do, thank goodness, otherwise we'd really be in a mess. Reason we're here is to sort of work the nuances around, you know, the possibilities that, that present themselves. And it's in the possibilities that present themselves where a lot of the confusion arises, and, well, you know, we want you to look at these five alternatives. Well, you know, gee whiz, do we really need five alternatives? I mean, let's work real hard and, and among ourselves before this guy, this person walks out the room and decide, well, maybe we, maybe we really only need two that are, are really worth the effort. That's the kind of thing I'm talking about, and in terms of codifying it, codifying is maybe too strong a word. Yeah, I think it really is sort of note to self, and it's a meaningful endeavor to, et cetera, that kind of language. Uh, but I do think it belongs in the document. I think it belongs in the document not only for future boards, but I think it belongs in the document, because this is something that I think is going to go to the town board, and I think the town board ought to understand that the planning board, it really is, we really are doing our best to, to to, um, you know, make the process uh more agreeable to others uh without uh sacrificing our, our responsibilities.
Yep. And as, as Eldad said, the, um, perhaps this could be stated as, as a goal that we have for each project to, to endeavor uh to get to the, uh, the most helpful point, get the most helpful points out and confirmed um by staff to make this project move along.
Yep, I, I think it's at every step of the process, you know, as we, as we concluded in formal hearing and moved to public. Here's the next level of expectations, et cetera. So I, yeah, exactly right. Um, I'm not going to name names, but one of my favorite attorneys is, is one who used to appear before us a lot. And when he came, he would just, just sit there and say, tell us what the goal would be for him that night. I am going to work tonight, I'm going to establish the wetlands, and we're going to be finished with that issue. We're going to tell you, we delineated, we've done this, and then we're going to be ready next time to show you something else, and then we're going to be ready for the, uh, you know, public hearing. It was so helpful, because he, he came in, just had this, these, these bite-sized pieces that he was uh taking in, in this process, and it really worked very, very well. It was probably pretty expensive for his clients, but that's the way it goes.
Anchoring the conversation too. Here's where we left off, here's where we're starting, yeah.
Yeah, it, it really moved off very nicely. Good, these are good comments, these are great comments. Great comments. Anyone else anything on, on this? Any other thoughts?
There was a, there was a, um, There was a, there was a, um, when they were, um, before Congress to get the Air Force Academy, uh, approved to, to, to design and build there before a congressional committee, the architects were, and there was a general from the, uh, from the Air Force, uh, sitting, uh, also with the architects and the general got frustrated with the conversation with the committee. And finally he said to the chairman of the committee, he said, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just like, please, if we can get a yes or a no. And the architect, huh, jumped in and said, uh, General, I suspect you're going to get a yes and a no. And that's what I like to avoid.
Yes.
Good.
Good. Well, there we are. So, um, I'll sum it all up. So Jennifer, fix it.
I'm taking copious notes. I, I, as long as, uh, everyone is, is sort of, as long as there's a consensus on all of the points that have been discussed. And I don't worry, you don't have to summarize. I have the notes and I can implement it.
And there's, there's, there's the takeaway.
Yeah. Just I hear Bob say that he's going to send you messages by a drone. I mess up those words somehow.
They'll just say they'll be coming in with drones pretty soon.
Thank you, Jennifer, for all your work.
Yes.
Yeah. And Tom, if you want to email me with, um, that language, um, I'm happy to work from, from your language.
Yeah, it's kind of a mess. Uh, I, I, obviously it's a mess. I couldn't even read it to myself. So I'll, I'll, I'll send you something.
Yeah. I mean, I took a couple of notes, you know, some shorthand on it, but I'm happy to work from, from where you started.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Anyone else? Anything that we've missed? Any other thoughts on what we looked at tonight?
I, I think we've, well, I think, you know, that, uh, the last statement we have in it is this, this whole thing is subject to change. Uh, or parts of it are, and that's what's going to happen. And, and if that, and that's fine. I mean, as we get smarter, we should get better.
Right.
And it's what do I speak about?
Yep. Good. Good. All righty. Is there a motion to close the, uh, meeting?
Um, Bob, do you want to mention that the March one? No, wait, sorry. Do you have a, uh, we have another meeting before then? Nevermind. I'm, I'm thinking we're in the middle of February.
I just wanted to say, I don't know if you want, there's people, there's an attendee with their hand up.
Oh, okay. Fine. Why not? Okay.
All right. Let me answer that. Uh, see Moses, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, everybody. Cynthia Moses from Glendale, Sabrina. Um, I love listening to your discussions and I'm kind of an in the weeds person myself. I wanted to point out that from a rules procedure, it's, it's really great to have all of the procedure that leads you up to your resolutions to approve or ask for more information, but is it possible to consider, uh, reviews, you know, public meeting opportunities, comments after a project is on its way? Because in your resolutions, you state very clearly the things that you want an applicant to follow and not follow and the timeliness of it. And there's really no opportunity for the public to come back and, and comment on how projects are going relative to what your expectations were when you approved the project. So it would be, you know, rules of procedure post approval.
Well, it's an interesting subject, but I, I, the way I understand it is we don't have any jurisdiction, legal jurisdiction at that point. We are not, uh, charged with any responsibility for, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on point of view, executing, uh, the approvals. That's left to, uh, the town, town, uh, building department. And the town building inspector, et cetera. So what we will hear and we have heard in the past where there has been, um, a sufficient change or, or an amendment, uh, or the, the town building inspector feels that he just needs additional guidance. And we've gone out and looked at things. And in some cases we have had, um, you know, uh, uh, we've asked for an amended application to make sure, certain that things have been, um, complied with. But all of those things come from the, the building department. Uh, they're, they're charged with all that. And ultimately, uh, we have no, um, authority to direct people to do X, Y, Z out in the field. Oh, that's the building department. And if there are violations, then it goes to the justice court. So as I understand it, we're, you know, once we finish it and sign off, uh, as I understand it, Jennifer, we're, we're, we're finished, aren't we? Uh, our, our, our domain is, is, is very, very limited. It's, it's nonexistent, it seems to me on, on some of these issues after post signature and approval.
Right. It, it is limited, as you mentioned. Um, it's, it's really up to staff to execute those conditions of approval with the exceptions that, that you just very eloquently described.
And what about at the moment of, um, extension renewal and so forth?
So that's, yeah, that's something that the, is in the planning board's jurisdiction. That's something the planning board reviews and considers. Um, there's
Can there be an opportunity for public comment?
Well, wait, I'm sorry. I had to interrupt, but we ought to be clear about extension and renewal. Are we talking about the extension of a building permit or the extension of, of an application?
Application.
Okay.
So there's no public hearing or public comment required by code, either by state or, or local, um, with, with every matter, it's, it's, you know, at the discretion of the planning board, uh, whether to take public comment on any matter that's before them. Uh, for example, you know, many times when there's an informal hearing before the board, um, and there's a member of the public that's in attendance and time will allow and that, that member of the public, you know, would like to make a comment. Many times the board will accommodate that similar to, to what we're experiencing right now. I mean, there's no, you know, requirement for public comments or, or public participation in the discussion of the rules of procedure, but you know, we're, the, the board has a tradition of, of accommodating those public comments when the time will allow.
For instance, Cynthia, that, that, uh, we have, uh, informal meetings and that's another place where we don't have to have any interface with the public. But as was just said, in another way, we do, um, uh, within reason, offer the public the view that they want to give at that point in time before we even go to, you know, a public hearing.
So, um, I, I'm just thinking that at this unique moment, you're reviewing procedure. Um, we happen to be on Zoom, which is wonderful. And if you hadn't, uh, let me in, that's fine. Um, but I think under other circumstances, people might not go all the way to town hall to be at your meeting, um, hoping that they'll have an opportunity to share what they want to share with you.
Well, especially I think, uh, if someone makes the effort, um, and comes down to town hall for, uh, one of our hearings, uh, we almost always will, will take those comments. If someone raises his or her hand and says, gee, I have a comment on this. If you've taken that effort, I, I, I think for the most part, we try to recognize that and, and, and hear from the person. So I mean, it's, uh, that's, that's a level of commitment. I think that we've always recognized, uh, right, wrong, or in between and, and taking comments. How, however, there are areas where, you know, um, we don't take, we just won't take comments while we're drafting a resolution from members of the public. I mean, this is, uh, between the applicant and between us. Um, very often we're, for example, we had an extension tonight. It's on a preliminary, uh, approval. It's already been approved, but they're, they're working on conditions to get to the next stage. So it's inappropriate really to take public comment, uh, at this point, uh, on something like that. So there are certain things that just, this doesn't work. Uh, it's inappropriate. And frankly, it's just, it's unfair to the applicant. Uh, the applicants really have rights that, uh, that need to be observed and protected as well in this process.
Understood. Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Is there now a motion to close the hearing? Close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All right. Yes.
Yes.
Another unanimous vote. Okay. Very good. All right.
My extensions.
Very good.